No, I got my Disney dad shirt on.
Lisa's here, is she here? Okay. Alright, I'm gonna get the rodeo. You good? Okay. Good morning, the June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Anaronda County Council is now in session. Uh, today we will wrap up deliberations on the proposed FY twenty-four budget for Anaronda County and will vote, um, and vote finally on all of the budget bills in the one resolution. Mr. Volkey will lead us in invocation and the pledge of allegiance this morning. Mr. Volkey, on you.
Thank you, thank you. Haster wants to come up here. Did I get that right?
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
You just not wanna stand here?
He's gonna lead us in the invocation.
Alright. Let us, uh, bow our heads. Father, we thank you, we bless you, we realize that this is the day that you have made, and certainly we shall rejoice and be glad in it. God, I pray that you would bind us together with cords that cannot be broken until you bring us into the unity of the Spirit with one voice, with one mind, and with one purpose, and that is to glorify you in everything that we do. God, I pray for each and every council person that's up here today. Every administrator, every worker, God, that they're be able to do the right thing today. God, I pray that you have put them in a space to make decisions for people in the county, and God, I pray that you give them the wisdom and the courage to do what's right for everyone, oh God. God, there are some special things that need to take place today in the lives of many people that's suffering in Anaronda County. And God, I pray that you would give them the ability to look through every case, look through every law, look through every policy, and to be able to look at and see the needs of the people in our county. And God, as we go through this day and go through this moment, I ask you to bless everyone that's here and that they will walk out of here knowing that they did what's good and what's perfect. In your name we pray, amen and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a brief statement, uh, this past weekend, we had a tragic, uh, incident, uh, that occurred in Annapolis, uh, and, and lost the lives of three individuals, and I just want to take a, a moment to do, a moment of silence, uh, to recognize, uh, those victims and let everyone know that this, this body, uh, is at support, uh, and, and with prayers and, and everything else we can do, uh, to support those victims, uh, going forward, but just a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Is there any other item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Uh, may have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitute the reading of the whole.
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Second.
Rodvian, second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, the motion carries. Madam Secretary, what is the final status of any testimony received on the FY twenty-four budget through the online testimonial tool?
Uh, yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, council members. Uh, we had the online testimony tool open all month, uh, during the month of May and until this morning. Uh, it looks like we have received a total of about a hundred and sixty-three submissions altogether. I am still combing through that and organizing it. However, I believe you all did receive individual emails, uh, over the course of the past forty-five days and have seen copies of those. I will get that posted as quickly as possible and it will be added to the record.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number twenty-six twenty-three.
Bill number twenty-six twenty-three, an ordinance concerning annual budget and appropriation ordinance of Anaronda County.
Alright, we will now vote on the county executive supplemental, uh, amendments to the budget. As a reminder, there have been three actions. Um, there was a May ninth proposal, a June seven proposal, and then yesterday we received a correction to one of the June seventh, uh, amendments. Uh, for the folks at home, everything is posted on our website as well. Uh, Mr. Trumpauer here is the budget officer, uh, representing the, the county, and I, I will turn it over to you for a few remarks.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. Um, I would urge your, uh, adoption of the supplemental. Um, I'd also take a moment just to recognize, um, that we work closely with the council, we work closely with the auditor's office on this, so I believe, uh, the supplemental is in order. Uh, we, our teams and the auditor's team, uh, spent some time making sure all the numbers matched and all the descriptions were accurate. Uh, thank you to the auditor for catching a few, um, mistakes and updates, and I believe that the supplemental before you now is in its proper posture and ready to be voted upon.
And I did want to ask Madam Auditor, uh, for free remarks, or just to confirm and concur with, uh, the budget officer. Not just that we don't trust you, Mr. Trumpauer, but.
Checks and balances, Mr. Chair, checks and balances, all good.
Uh, Michelle Bolaire, County Auditor, I agree with the comments of the budget officer. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to review and the working that we did together, uh, between our offices.
Thank you. Alright, uh, may have a motion to vote on amendments numbers fifty-six through one-twelve as a block.
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion to vote on amendment numbers fifty-six through one hundred and twelve as a block has been adopted.
Awesome. Uh, Mr. Trumpauer, any other before we finalize, uh, the supplementals? These were the ones that we had, you briefed us on here last week, uh, during our virtual meeting, correct?
Uh, thank, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. Uh, no, I stand by my previous remarks and urge your, um, expeditious passage, thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendments number fifty-six through one-twelve.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna read the amendments in first, which again, I know we would like to avoid.
I'm sorry.
However, I do need to do that. Okay, amendment number fifty-six. This amendment moves one director of equity, diversity, and inclusion position from the Office of the County Executive to the Office of the Chief Administrative Officer and reclassifies one assistant to the County Executive position from the Office of the County Executive to an assistant to the Chief Administrative Officer position in the Office of the Chief Administrative Officer. Amendment number fifty-seven. This amendment changes the pay grade of four cashier two positions in the Office of Finance from grade NR eight to grade OS seven. Amendment number fifty-eight. Capital budget. This amendment decreases FY twenty-four other state grants by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Project C one zero six seven zero zero advanced land acquisition and increases FY twenty-four other state grants by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Project C five three seven eight zero zero county facilities and systems upgrade in order to realign the appropriation of the state grant for the Lothian Green Elevator. Amendment number fifty-nine, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four other federal grants by four hundred and eighty-eight two hundred thousand dollars for Project C five eight two eight zero zero electric vehicle charging station and other green technology to appropriate grant funds from the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program. Amendment number sixty, capital budget. This amendment removes Project C five eight nine three zero zero Ralph J. Bunch Center renovation, shifts two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in FY twenty-four general fund Pago and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in FY twenty-four other federal grants from Project C five eight nine three zero zero Ralph J. Bunch Center renovation to Project C five seven seven nine zero zero Ralph Bunch Community Center, increases FY twenty-four other state grants by a million dollars for Project C five seven seven nine zero zero Ralph Bunch Community Center and revises the description for Project C five seven seven nine zero zero Ralph Bunch Community Center as shown in attachment A. Amendment number sixty-one, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four other state grants by fifty thousand dollars for Project E five three nine one zero zero upgrade various schools to appropriate grant funds for the Brooklyn Park Elementary School mark, Marquee. Amendment number sixty-two. Capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four POS development by two million nine hundred and ninety-six thousand two hundred dollars for Project P five seven zero two zero zero Eisenhower Golf Course to appropriate additional program open space development funds. Amendment number sixty-three, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four POS acquisition by one million five, fifty-five thousand three hundred dollars for Project P four zero zero two zero zero Greenland's Parkland and Open Space to appropriate additional program open space acquisition funds. Amendment number sixty-four, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four miscellaneous funds by one point two million dollars for Project B five eight eight nine zero zero PCB monitoring and remediation to appropriate additional settlement revenue. Amendment number sixty-five. This amendment increases funding to the Board of Education by a total of one million seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is the net effect of reducing fixed charges by one million three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to correct the contribution to the self-insurance fund and increasing, and increasing instructional salaries and wages, special education, and fixed charges by a combined three million one, three point one million dollars conditional on reaching a specified agreement to increase certain minimum salaries. Amendment number sixty-six. This amendment increases contractual services by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to provide sufficient funding for consultant services for the Police Accountability Board. Amendment number sixty-seven. This amendment reduces personal services by two hundred and seventy-three thousand two hundred dollars to correct a budgeting error, reduces contractual services by forty thousand dollars based on historical spending on fuel oil, and reduces supplies and materials by thirty thousand dollars based on historical spending for equipment repairs. Amendment number sixty-eight. This amendment increases personal services by a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to correct a budgeting error. Amendment number sixty-nine. This amendment increases personal services by thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars, which is the net effect of decreasing by fifty thousand dollars to increase turnover and increasing by eighty-eight thousand two hundred dollars to correct a budgeting error. Amendment number seventy. This amendment increases grants, contributions, and other in the Community Development Fund by twenty thousand dollars to appropriate additional grant revenue. Amendment number seventy-one. This amendment increases grants, contributions, and other in the Laurel Racetrack Community Benefit Fund by twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars to appropriate an award for a capital project. Amendment number seventy-two. This amendment increases the appropriation in the Grant Special Revenue Fund by one hundred and ninety-seven thousand two hundred dollars to add new grant funding for the Board of Election Supervisors, Office of Central Services, and Health Department. Amendment number seventy-three. This amendment reduces personal services by thirty thousand dollars, which is the net effect of reducing by a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to correct an overage in contractual pay and increasing by a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to raise the cost of living adjustment for school health nurses. Amendment number seventy-four. This amendment adds one sheriff four position, reduces personal services by ninety-seven thousand seven hundred dollars, which is the net effect of reducing by two hundred and ten thousand dollars based on historical turnover and increasing by a hundred and twelve thousand three hundred dollars associated with a new position. Increases contractual services by fourteen thousand five hundred dollars associated with a new position and increases capital outlay by eighty-six thousand five hundred dollars associated with a new position. Amendment number seventy-five. This amendment adds five police officers and five police sergeant positions, increases personal services by one million seven, seventy-seven thousand eight hundred dollars associated with new positions, increases contractual services by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars associated with new positions, and increases capital outlay by eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars associated with new positions. Amendment number seventy-six. This amendment restores the proposed funding level for personal services, which is the net effect of reducing by five hundred and thirty thousand dollars to correct budgeting errors and increasing by five hundred and thirty thousand dollars to raise pay for library employees. Amendment number seventy-seven, capital budget. This amendment corrects the project name for capital project W seven seven eight six zero zero Crofton Meadows two WTP upgrade. Amendment number seventy-eight, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four miscellaneous funds by two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for capital project C five six five four zero zero fiber network. Amendment number seventy-nine, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four general county bonds for E five four nine three zero zero athletic stadium improvements by five hundred thousand dollars. Amendment number eighty, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four inter-agency commission funds for capital project E five three eight two zero zero building systems renovation by one million six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars based on increased state funding. Amendment number eighty-one, capital budget. This amendment decreases FY twenty-four inter-agency commission funds by two million three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and increases FY twenty-four general county bonds by two million three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for E five seven eight zero 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 Cat North based on revised state funding. Amendment number eighty-two, capital program. This amendment swaps seven million two hundred and eighty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars in FY twenty-five general county bonds for FY twenty-five inter-agency commission funds and seventeen million nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in FY twenty-six inter-agency commission funds for FY twenty-six general county bonds for E five seven eight zero 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 Cat North based on revised state funding. Amendment number eighty-three, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four general county bonds by five hundred thousand dollars for capital project E five three nine four zero zero driveways and parking lots. Amendment number eighty-four, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four inter-agency commission funds by thirty-four thousand dollars for capital project E five three eight zero 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 health and safety based on revised state funding. Amendment number eighty-five, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four inter-agency commission funds by one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for capital project E five three eight three zero zero maintenance backlog. Amendment number eighty-six, capital budget. This amendment reduces FY twenty-four general county bonds by two million one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and increases FY twenty-four education impact fees District Five by two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and FY twenty-four education impact fees District One by one million nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for capital project E five five zero three zero zero Old Mill MS North. Amendment number eighty-seven, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four inter-agency commission funds by four hundred and one thousand dollars for capital project E five three eight four zero zero roof replacement. Amendment number eighty-eight, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four general county bonds by two hundred and thousand dollars for capital project E five three nine zero 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 school furniture. Amendment number eighty-nine, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four general county bonds by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for capital project E five three eight one zero zero security-related upgrades. Amendment number ninety, capital budget. This amendment reduces FY twenty-four general county bonds by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and increases FY twenty-four public safety impact fees by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for capital project F five eight three three zero zero Jessup Fire Station. Amendment number ninety-one, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four general county bonds by eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars and increases FY twenty-four highway impact fees District Six by two hundred thousand dollars for capital project H five eight seven three zero zero Blue Water Milestone Shared Use Paths. This project was mistakenly omitted from the ABAO, but is already included on page two hundred and twenty-two of the FY twenty-four proposed capital budget and program. Amendment number ninety-two, capital budget. This amendment reduces FY twenty-four general county bonds by four hundred and sixty thousand dollars and increases FY twenty-four highway impact fees District One by three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for capital project H five nine zero five zero zero BWY Trail X, Xed Baybrook Connect. Amendment number ninety-three, capital budget. This amendment revises the description for capital project H five eight six eight zero zero Conway Road Improvements as shown in exhibit, attachment B. Amendment number ninety-four, capital program. This amendment swaps a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in FY twenty-five general county bonds for FY twenty-five highway impact fees District Four, three million five hundred thousand dollars in FY twenty-six general county bonds for FY twenty-six highway impact fees District Four, and two million dollars in FY twenty-seven general county bonds for FY twenty-seven highway impact fees District Four for capital project H five eight six eight zero zero Conway Road Improvements. Amendment number ninety-five, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four general county bonds by five hundred and one thousand dollars and FY twenty-four federal bridge repair program funds by one million four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for capital project H five three four nine zero zero Magathie Bridge Ro, Road Bridge Magathie River. Amendment number ninety-six, capital budget. This amendment reduces FY twenty-four general fund Pago by four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and increases FY twenty-four highway impact fees District Two by four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for capital project H five eight nine seven zero zero Marleneck Boulevard Road Improvements. Amendment number ninety-seven, capital budget. This amendment reduces FY twenty-four federal bridge repair program funds by three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars and increases FY twenty-four general county bonds by three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for capital project H five six six eight zero zero McCandry Road Lions Creek. Amendment number ninety-eight, capital budget. This amendment reduces FY twenty-four developer contribution by three hundred dollars for capital project H five eight zero 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 Maryland Route one seventy-five sidewalks. Amendment number ninety-nine, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four general county bonds by one million three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars for capital project H three seven one two zero zero Town Center to Reese Road based on a revised fiscal analysis. Amendment number one hundred, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four other state grants by eight hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars for capital project J five four zero seven zero zero state funded syst, systemics program. Amendment number one hundred and one, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four general county bonds for P five seven zero three zero zero Beverly Triton Nature Park by seventy-one thousand dollars based on a revised fiscal analysis. Amendment number one hundred and two, capital budget. This amendment reduces FY twenty-four general county bonds by seven thousand one hundred dollars and increases FY twenty-four program open space development funds by seven thousand one hundred dollars for capital project P five three five nine zero zero Fort Smallwood Park. Amendment number one hundred and three, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four general county bonds by three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for capital project P four five seven zero 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 school outdoor recreational facilities. This project was mistakenly omitted from the ABAO, but is already included on page one sixteen of the FY twenty-four proposed capital budget and program. Amendment number one hundred and four, capital budget. This amendment reduces FY twenty-four program open space development funds by seven thousand one hundred dollars and increases FY twenty-four general county bonds by seven thousand one hundred dollars for capital project P three seven two zero 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 South Shore Trail. Amendment number one hundred and five, capital budget. This amendment removes a reduction in prior approved funding for C five seven nine nine zero zero Arundel Center elevator modernization based on a revised fiscal analysis. Amendment number one hundred and six, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four general county bonds for capital project H four seven eight nine zero zero road reconstruction by one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to address the backlog of projects. Amendment number one hundred and seven, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four general county bonds by four hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred dollars and FY twenty-four general Pago, general fund Pago by one million fifty-five thousand nine hundred dollars for capital project H four seven eight six zero zero road resurfacing to address the backlog of projects. Amendment number one hundred and eight, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four general county bonds for capital project H five zero eight four zero zero sidewalk and bikeway fund by two hundred thousand dollars for design and feasibility of sidewalks along Shore Acres Road. Amendment number one hundred and nine, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four general county bonds for capital project J five eight seven five zero zero Glen Burnie Town Center Tutoring Center renovation by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to complete the project. Amendment number one hundred and ten, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four funding for capital project P four zero zero two zero zero Greenland's Parkland and Open Space by a total of one million five hundred and fifty-five thousand three hundred dollars, including an increase of FY twenty-four general fund Pago by five hundred thousand dollars to support the City of Annapolis acquisition of property adjacent to Cars Beach, and an increase of FY twenty-four program open space acquisition by one million fifty-five three hundred dollars as a result of additional state funding. Amendment number one hundred and eleven, capital budget. This amendment increases FY twenty-four general county bonds for capital project P five nine one zero 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 Lake Waterford Park Improvements by one million dollars for construction of a tennis bubble. And amendment number one hundred and twelve, capital budget. This amendment modifies the description for capital project P five seven nine nine zero zero West County Swim Center as shown on attachment C.
Did Madam Secretary need any water after, uh, reading through all of those? Any further discussion, uh, on the amendments? Alright, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendments number, block amendments fifty-six through one-twelve.
I believe we do need a motion to adopt and a second, and then we can do the roll.
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now I'll call the roll.
Yeah.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, amendment numbers fifty-six through one hundred and twelve have been adopted.
And I do believe, uh, these were all balanced, uh, Mr. Trumpauer, so you don't.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer. Um, that, that is the entire supplemental. Uh, there should be one additional amendment that is a impact fee rebalancing. Do we have that amendment available?
I think, uh, if we could just have five minutes, would that be okay? You have it.
You already have it?
So, Mr. Chair, if you will, I'll fill the time by explaining what this is, perhaps? Very good. Uh, so, um, what your council is handing out is traditionally what we call the last balancing amendment, so this is after we've reviewed everything in the budget and the supplemental. There's usually one final tie-in that makes sure all the numbers are right. This, uh, was worked on with the auditor's office over the last couple of days and just trues up the amount of impact fees. Um, so that, this doesn't have any, um, impact on anything that we've funded or not funded, it just kind of trues up the number, so it's correct. Um, and I'll defer to Madam Auditor if she has any additional comments.
Please.
Uh, Michelle Bolaire, County Auditor. Yeah, it's, Chris said, um, it's to put the operating, kind of, ability in the operating budget to use the impact fees in the capital budget.
Okay, and this would be amendment number fifty?
One thirteen, I believe.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one thirteen.
Amendment number one thirteen. This amendment increases the amount appropriated, appropriated from the impact fee special revenue fund by one million one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to correspond with the impact fee amounts shown as revenue in the capital project fund.
I'm assuming this is, uh, your previous comments stand as.
Uh, the administration would urge your adoption of amendment one thirteen.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
A second?
Second.
Alright, um, any final discussions, seeing no lights? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment one thirteen.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, amendment number one hundred and thirteen has been adopted.
I'm gonna transition, did you still want to take a, a recess or we can continue? Mr. Trumpauer?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Office. I believe that the, um, annual budget and appropriation ordinance, which is bill twenty-six twenty-three, is now in its final posture for vote. The administration would urge your adoption of the bill.
Okay. Uh, any additional comments on, um, I guess, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number twenty-six twenty-three.
Bill number twenty-six twenty-three, an ordinance concerning annual budget and appropriation ordinance of Anaronda County.
Uh, any further discussion from the council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number twenty-six twenty-three.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, uh, bill number twenty-six twenty-three as amended has been passed.
Now, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number twenty-seven twenty-three. Now, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 2723.
Bill number 2723, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Leavis, Special Community Benefits, Benefit Districts, Shore Erosion Control Districts, and Waterways Improvement Districts.
All right. Need...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trummer, Budget Officer. This is the annual SCBD bill, so this just sets the rates in collaboration with the communities that have special community benefit district. So, it's all included there. It's been checked and double-checked, and we'd urge your adoption of 2723.
Any further discussion from the council? Seeing no lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 2723.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 2723 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 2823.
Bill number 2823, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Arundel Gateway Special Taxing District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trummer, Budget Officer. So I will say, Bills number 28 through 35 all relate to specific special taxing districts. We work with our consultant, Unicap, to double-check those rates and do the assessments, and they're all in order. So you can consider this comment on 2823, consistent with each subsequent bill till you get to 35, but we believe they're in order and ready for passage, and the administration urges your support.
Understood. Any final comments, seeing no light? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 2823.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 2823 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 2923.
Bill number 2923, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Arundel Mills Special Taxing District.
Previous comments still stand. Any further discussion? Seeing no lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 2923.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 2923 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 3023.
Bill number 3023, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Dorchester Special Taxing District.
Previous comments stand. Seeing no lights. For additional comments, please, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 3023.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 3023 has been passed.
Please read the title of Bill number 3123.
Bill number 3123, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Farmington Village Special Taxing District.
All right. Previous comments, seeing no additional lights. For additional comments, please call the roll on Bill number 3123.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 3123 has been passed.
Please read the title of Bill number 3223.
Bill number 3223, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, National Business Park Special Taxing District.
All right. Seeing no additional lights or comments, please call the roll on Bill number 3223.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 3223 has been passed.
Please read the title of Bill number 3323.
Bill number 3323, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, National Business Park North, Special Taxing District.
I see, uh...
Oh.
Oh.
Sorry.
Seeing no additional comments. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 3323.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 3323 has been passed.
Please read the title of Bill number 3423.
Bill number 3423, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Two Rivers Special Taxing District.
All right. Seeing no additional lights or comments, please call the roll on 3423.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 3423 has been passed.
Please read the title of Bill number 3523.
Bill number 3523, An Ordnance Concerning Tax Levis, Village South at Wall Chapel Special Taxing District.
This is the last bill where the Trumpauer remarks will stand. Seeing no additional lights, please call the roll on Bill number 3523.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 3523 has been passed.
Please read the title of Bill number 3623.
Bill number 3623, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, Solid Waste Collection, Solid Waste Service Charge.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trummer, Budget Officer. So this is the bill to set the rates for trash and recycling pickup. It's the proper rate to support everything that was in the utility funds in the budget. So we would ask that the council please adopt this bill.
Seeing no additional comments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 3623.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Bill number 3623 has been passed.
Please read the title of Bill number 3723.
Bill number 3723, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, Utilities, Metered Water, and Wastewater Charges.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the title suggested, this is the utility fund bill for water and wastewater. This rate supports all the good stuff in the budget that you just passed a few moments ago.
Any additional comments? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 3723.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill number 3723 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please call, read the title of Bill number 3823.
Bill number 3823, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Use or Occupancy Tax.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the hotel tax bill, so this changes the rate from 7% to 8% in support of the budget.
Seeing no additional lights, please call the roll on 3823.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill number 3823 has been passed.
Please call the title of, the title of Bill number 3923.
Bill number 3923, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Transportation Network Service Assessment.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trummer, Budget Officer. So this is, this is a new one. This is the ride-share surcharge. So this is also, revenue from this bill is incorporated into the budget that was passed a few minutes back.
All right. Seeing no additional lights, please call the roll on 3923.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill number 3923 has been passed.
Please read the title of Bill number 4023.
Bill number 4023, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Real Property Transfer Tax, Housing Trust Special Revenue Fund.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trummer, Budget Officer. So this is the revenue bill that will support the Housing Trust Fund. So you'll remember from previous presentations that this increases the transfer tax rate to 1.5%, but only for those transactions greater than $1 million.
Seeing any additional lights or comments? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 4023.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill number 4023 has been passed.
Please read the title of Bill number 4123.
Bill number 4123, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Revenue Reserve Fund.
Trumpauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trummer, Budget Officer. This increases the maximum rate of the rainy day fund to 8% of operating revenue from 7%.
Seeing no additional lights, please call the roll on Bill 4123.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill number 4123 has been passed.
Please read the title of Bill number 4223.
Bill number 4223, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Income Tax.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trummer, Budget Officer. This is the income tax rate bill. So just as a reminder, the new rate would go into effect at the beginning of the tax year, which is January 1st.
Seeing no additional lights, please call the roll on Bill number 4223.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill number 4223 has been passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1723.
I think we need to do Bill number 4323.
Oh.
I'll read that title. You ready?
Please read the title 4023.
Bill number 4323, An Ordnance Concerning Property Tax and Semi-Annual Payment Service Charge.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trummer, Budget Officer. As advertised, this is the annual property tax bill.
Seeing no additional lights, please call the roll for Bill 4323.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill number 4323 has been passed.
All right. Now read the title of Resolution number 1723.
Resolution number 1723, Resolution Increasing the Rate of Transfer Tax on a Written Instrument Conveying Title to Real Property or a Lease-Hold Interest in Real Property When the Consideration Paid or to Be Paid for the Conveyance Is $1 Million or More.
Mr. Tremor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Chris Tremor, Budget Officer. This is something we in the biz call belt and suspenders. It's a little extra resolution to support the previous bill you passed for the increase in the transfer tax to coincide with that special revenue going into the housing trust fund.
Any comments from, seeing no lights, please call the roll on Resolution number 1723.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Resolution number 1723 has been passed.
Thank you. Any additional comments from our, please, ma'am?
Yes, um, this is actually maybe a point of order. I, I went on a trail there. I need to go back if I could, and I don't know if this is a motion required to change a vote on 4123?
No, I think we can just change your, your vote.
Okay. Change to aye, please.
So that's Bill number 4123?
Yes.
Okay, so just to state for the record, that's seven in the affirmative and none in the negative, which still leaves Bill number 4123 as passed.
All right, any other business to be brought before the county council?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Tremor.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, Chris Tremor, Budget Officer. If I might, just as a, a point of personal privilege, if I can thank the budget team for their work, and they're not here in the chamber because they're all upstairs still working in the conference room, I'll also let you know, they're all wearing matching shirts, so they might be a little embarrassed to come down here, but I think they look very adorable, so, um, it's a big day for the budget office. It's 45 days of hard work with you all, but six months of hard work before that. I'd like to think this process went relatively smoothly this year. Always room for improvement, and we'll be continuing to work on that, but the fact that we're about to adjourn before 11 o'clock, I can tell you that when I was up in your seats, there were days when we didn't get out until after dark.
Yes.
So this is, um, it's been, it's good budget. I appreciate the collaboration with all seven of you and the communication. I appreciate the collaboration and communication with the auditor's office, and I'm just really proud of, of the budget team that's upstairs because they really put this together, so I want to thank them personally.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was, uh, uh, I think, a very smooth budget process this year. I want to take a, a minute to, one, wish Councilwoman Hummer a happy birthday today. What a great birthday.
Happy birthday!
We, we got you a budget. Happy birthday.
(laughing). But in addition to that, um, Ms. Hummer is, is, this is her first term on the council, but not a stranger to wrangling votes after spending six years or so on the Board of Education. So I just want to take a minute to thank her for her work, especially on the supplemental. Both her ability to count votes and, and communicate with colleagues really helped bring a smooth, I believe, 7-0 vote to the supplemental, which is, um, so I thank her for that work behind the scenes. But the budget has been a good process this year. This is a, a incredible statement of our county's values today. There's a lot of really exciting initiatives coming forward, and we, I believe, this council today has proven that we are a very fiscally responsible county and looking to really seek, that's not the right word, really make sure that we put our, our tax dollars where our values are. So I appreciate everybody's work, the budget office, obviously, Ms., Madam Auditor and her team, and my colleagues. I look forward to seeing a lot of this budget come to fruition and actually jump off of, out of a spreadsheet into really impacting the, the community and the constituents we serve, so. We did get almost near unanimous vote on the ABAO, which is all the good things everyone wants to see happen. It's still fascinating that we don't, we didn't quite get there with what it takes to make that bill come to life on the revenue side, so, um, but all in all, we've passed an amazing budget today, so thank you to everyone.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to center my remarks on the process as well. I appreciate the budget team, Mr. Trumpauer, your leadership, your entire team behind you. I know you get to sit up here and take all the credit, but they do the real work, so thank you. Want to thank the county executives' office as well, Mr. Barron, Ms. Dyer, who's here, Mr. Hunt, I think, has played some roles in this too. I also want to sort of give a special thank you to the chair. I will say, this is now my fifth budget that I've been a part of. This is the smoothest and most collaborative budget that I feel like we have been a part of, and so I just want to thank you for your leadership on this. I will say, it could be your experience being in the minority party, I don't know what it is, but you have given us an ability to feel like we're really part of the process and to have some voice and some say in this, so I appreciate that, and I just want to especially thank you for that, because being in the minority, sometimes you step back and you say, well, what, what effect can I really have on this? And you have made it a collaborative process where I have felt bought in and I have really had the opportunity to, to get some things in this budget that made sense for my district and for my constituents, so I want to thank you for that.
Pursuant. Ms. Hummer?
Um...
And happy birthday, Ms. Hummer.
Oh, thank you. This is, yes, thank you, Mr. Trumpauer, and all of your team for all your work, and Madam Auditor, for all, all your work. It has, um, um, I have done budgets for years with the Board of Education, so it's a similar experience, but a little different, and I'm just very pleased with how collaboratively we all worked and how we all sought together, all the colleagues and all the staff, to, to come up with things that would benefit all of our areas. Just like our own budgets at home, you know, we have to prioritize and make things in place, and I think this budget really hits it, that we're hitting all the priorities that are my priorities, but I think are the focus of most of our constituents, which is, we want to invest in housing and healthcare and food and education and recreation, and at the same time, we want to make sure that we have solid retirement savings for, for employees and that we have good savings in place. So we've managed to hit all of those things, and so that's exciting to, to see that, how much, how we're able to move forward with this, and like Ms. Pickard said, I'm looking forward to seeing many things, these things come to fruition, and as we build and, and include, but I want to thank you all very much for prioritizing always that we are good stewards of our money and that we're not just spending, we're also saving as we go along. Thank you.
Just going straight to the...
(laughing). Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to reiterate, reiterate comments of my colleagues who have served on this council before. It was, uh, it, in some ways, and I said this at the last meeting, it felt like my first budget, because there was more inclusiveness across the aisle. We were able to put together a really strong supplemental budget, standing up additional police, police officers, which I know is something that this council, we really stood, united on that, and, and we see the result of that in that supplemental budget.